Welcome to the regular meeting of the Fairfield Planning Commission for September 27th, 2017. Perry? Ma'am, why don't you give that to me? Yeah, why don't you have a seat? Well, we'll get to you eventually. May we please have the roll call?
Yes, Commissioner Wesley.
President.
Commissioner Cohen.
President.
Commissioner Branch.
Here.
Commissioner Paddus. Commissioner Walker. Commissioner McDonald. And Commissioner Geiger.
Here. Commissioner Cohen, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are speaker cards in the lobby area that have to be filled out by anyone who would like to speak on an item under public comments or scheduled matters. Speakers may address items on this agenda at the time each item is considered. Speakers will be given three minutes to speak. Please pass the card up to us prior to the time for public comments on the item. Next up is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda, but I do want to alert you to one item that you would have noted as you read your packet. Item A is an appeal of several approvals by the zoning administrator. The appellant has requested that that item be continued to your meeting of October 25th to give him time to work out with the project applicant an amenable solution to both parties. So, that item would be continued for tonight.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda? Second?
Second.
All in favor say yes. Next is approval of the minutes from the September 13th meeting. Are there any changes to the minutes? Is there a second? Moved in second and all in favor, please say yes.
Aye.
Opposed? Public comments. This is the time for the public to speak on items not on the agenda, but within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. Items from the public that are not part of the agenda will be taken under consideration without discussion or action by the Commission and may be referred to staff. I'll now open up the public comment period. I have no speaker cards for public comment. Right, she, this is on item A. That's being continued, but I'll call you up before we continue it. The next item on the agenda is scheduled matters. For each agendized item, there will first be a presentation by city staff. I'll then ask the applicant to address the Planning Commission if they'd like. Then I'll open the public hearing and call out the names of members of the public who have filled out speaker cards to come forward to the podium to speak. A red light will flash to indicate your three minutes is up. I'll close the public hearing after all speakers have addressed the Commission. After the public hearing is closed, the Planning Commission will deliberate on the item and may have additional questions of staff. The Commission will then vote on the items. Next up is item A. That's going to be continued, but I do have a speaker card from Carol Fitzgerald. You wanted to speak on item A?
My time now?
Right, now's your time.
Hello, thank you for this time. My name is Edna Fitzgerald, and I'm here because I've been having a difficult find, a difficult time finding a place to live in Fairfield. Just recently, I was given this sheet saying that I could come here and speak, but now you've changed the time that I can't speak because you've moved the date. I need an apartment, and I've been looking for an apartment for five years. Somebody has been using my name in this city for five years, and longer than that. And when I go to the proper authority to get help, I get a runaround. I end up back, when I go and search, I end up right back at the same place that I started at, and I'm not understanding what's going on in the city. I love the city very much, and I'm still going to try to do what I can to live here. I want to live here, but somebody has targeted me. They, I'm a victim of identity theft. I have no place of address. I'm living in a hotel, and I've been living in a hotel for the past six months. It's ridiculous. So, somebody has targeted me. I don't know who it is or why. And everybody can say, "Oh, no, ain't nobody targeting you." Yes, it is, and you can say it's in my mind, but it's not. I'm a target, and I need help. The services that I go to give me the runaround and tell me that they can't help me. So, I just want to bring this to the people's attention. I thank you for this time to speak because I'm not going to give up. I love this city, and I always have, and I thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments. Our next item is item B, a resolution denying a request from Catherine and Michael Abbasy to develop a four-story mixed-use building with 119 apartments and 15,255 square feet of commercial space in an existing retail center at 1500 Oliver Road. Our staff person is Jonathan Atkinson. Jonathan?
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Planning Commission. At your September 13th hearing, a public hearing was conducted for 1500 Oliver Road. At that hearing, the Planning Commission, her testimony from the public, staff, and the applicants, vote to approve the project failed. Staff was directed to return with a resolution and findings for denial. You have a resolution with findings for denial before you. Staff recommends that that resolution be adopted.
Do any Commission members have any questions for staff?
Uh-uh. Nope.
All right, I'll turn it back to the Commission. Any discussion, deliberation?
So, what would happen if this isn't approved, this resolution?
If the resolution for denial is not approved, it would depend on how the vote turns out, I suppose. If the Commission voted to approve the prior resolution from last week, then the project would move forward as approved. If the Commission stalemated on this resolution, a tie is a denial, and so the project would be denied, and the appeal would go to City Council.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number 27-18?
I have a motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor, say yes.
I have a question on this question. This is for Dave. In paragraph A, it talks about the Planning Commission does not find that the location size, design, and operating characteristics and intensity of the proposed use are compatible with the existing anticipated future land uses in the vicinity. Was that stated in last week's meeting, or two weeks ago meeting?
Those precise words weren't stated. The Planning Commission didn't go into precise detail. However, staff worked with the city attorney to prepare language that catches essentially the gist of the Planning Commission's discussion, and based on the testimony that was given that supports that, the discussion and direction from the Planning Commission.
Any other questions? All right, there's a motion and a second. All in favor, say yes. Yes. Opposed?
Opposed.
Commissioner, Commissioner Cohen is opposed.
All yeses except Commissioner Cohen?
Our next item is item C, a public hearing on a request to develop a 70-unit expansion to the existing Paradise Valley Estates campus. Our staff person is Maylie Sheehan.
Before we start, my wife works as a therapist through a contract company there, and the lawyer said I should recuse myself because of possible conflict of interest.
Okay, thank you. Dave?
Good evening, Arnold Chair. Those of you in the jurisdiction, those of you in the area, and I will be presenting the Paradise Valley Estates 6,000 Extension Project. Yes, ma'am. Hello. Sorry about that. Hi there. My name is Maylie, and I will be presenting the Paradise Valley Estates 6,000 Extension Project. The project site is located on a vacant 8.5-acre parcel in the Paradise Valley neighborhood. As I go closer here, you can see that the existing campus is directly to the east and the adjacent neighborhood to the, or excuse me, directly adjacent to the west, I'm sorry, and there's existing residential homes to the east. The project is consistent with the general plan's residential medium density designation, and as it is conditioned, it is consistent with the residential medium density hillside overlay designation of the zoning ordinance. A little background on Paradise Valley Estates. It is an existing senior community in the Paradise Valley neighborhood. It's been in operation for several years, and the community offers a variety of dwelling types for its residents, including independent living, assisted living, skilled nursing, and continued care. There is a total of 459 units dispersed throughout the property in single-family homes, apartment units, and care facilities. Approximately 92% of those units are occupied. As I stated before, the project site is on 8.5 acres on a vacant parcel east of the existing campus. This extension project includes 70 dwelling units, 20 single-family homes, and 50 apartment cottages, or excuse me, apartment units. In addition, there are four recreational buildings, an environmental center, an amenities building, a clubhouse, and a classrooms building. A lot line adjustment is required for this project to meet the building setback requirements, and that has been conditioned by staff in the conditions of approval. A reciprocal easement agreement is also required to allow cross-access and parking between the existing campus and the proposed extension project, which has also been conditioned by staff in the conditions of approval. Per the zoning ordinance regulations, 149 parking spaces are required. 177 spaces have been provided. Access will be granted off a gated entrance from Paradise Valley Drive, and landscaping and associated site improvements have been proposed for the project. In addition to the RM zoning, the project is in the hillside overlay district and therefore must adhere to the hillside management guidelines. In order for a project to blend appropriately to the hillside area, the hillside management guidelines list several development factors that the project must be considerate of. This project does meet those factors, and I have them listed here. Grading drainage and erosion control. Despite being in the hillside development overlay, the site is actually relatively flat, and the finished grade will flow with the natural topography and the existing slope of the site. Additionally, the project has been engineered to connect existing storm drain, water, and sewer lines, all of which are sized appropriately to handle the project. Architecture. The proposed buildings have been designed to complement the hillside area and the adjacent surrounding neighborhood. Various architectural elements have been incorporated to reduce visual bulk and mass of the site. I will go into a little bit more detail of the architecture when we review the building Lot placement and size. Major efforts were made to ensure that the project's site plan protected the privacy and views of the adjacent lots. Originally, the large villa apartment buildings were located on the perimeter of the site. Those buildings have been relocated to the center back of the site, and the single-family cottages are now on the interior east and west property lines, kind of smoothing the transition of the extension project into the existing neighborhoods. Landscape design. The conceptual landscape plan proposed is complementary to the existing Paradise Valley Estates campus and the Paradise Valley Drive streetscaping. There is ample landscaping proposed, and it is of very high quality in design. Open space preservation. The site is mostly natural native grasses. There's only one existing oak tree on the southwest corner of the site, and that oak tree will be preserved and incorporated into the landscaping. Public safety. The project has been viewed from a fire, police, and traffic safety standpoint. Fire and police have both verified that emergency vehicle access will be granted to the site and that all the appropriate fire buffers have been provided. Roadway, driveway, and design. Interior roadways have been designed to match the existing character of the Paradise Valley Estates campus with meandering pathways and looped connections. Large notches in the hillside and wide straight alignments are not present. A conditional use permit has been applied for additional building height with this project. The zoning ordinance permits 35 feet in RM zones. However, it does allow for an increase in building height through the conditional use permit process. The purpose for this requested additional height is to ensure that the units closest to the east property line, next to the neighboring single-family homes, stay at a single-story in height. While this creates greater compatibility and consistency with that adjacent neighborhood, a substantial number of one-story cottages on the site does create difficulties for the site to meet its minimum density requirements without increasing height for the apartment buildings. Therefore, the applicants are requesting for additional height for those apartment buildings to add another story. The maximum height proposed is 50 feet. Allowing for that 50 feet will permit for the single-family cottages to remain on the east property line and allow for the project to meet its minimum eight-units-per-acre-density requirement. Staff has concluded that the required use permit findings have been met. The maximum building height will not exceed double the permitted RM zone. Additional setbacks for those villa apartment buildings can be met and have been met. The building's architectural design to reduce building mass and apparent visual height are prevalent in there. Additionally, intensive landscaping will also reduce the bulk and minimize impact on off-site views. Lastly, the additional height will meet the minimum density requirement and will not increase the density or intensity of the site. So here we have a site plan of the project, to kind of give you a little bit of context of everything I'm talking about. You have to the west, the existing Paradise Valley Estates campus. To the east is Couples Court, which is a neighborhood in Paradise Valley, and these are some existing single-family homes. And you can see along the edges here, they propose the single-family cottages, and at the center and back of the site are the five apartment villa buildings. The four amenity buildings are kind of spread out. You've got three right here, and the environmental building in the corner. It should be noted, although the environmental building is adjacent to the single-family homes, there is a difference in grade here, so there will be a significant drop down to the site. So these homes should still view this environmental building similar to a residential house. It'll be that same kind of roof line. And then lastly, along the front of Paradise Valley Drive are some more single-family cottages. As I stated before, ooh, sorry. Wow. Sorry about that. As I stated before, a lot line adjustment is necessary for the buildings to all meet zoning regulations for the setbacks. The yellow line there is the existing property, and the red here is the proposed property. These are some renderings of the architecture for the project to kind of give you a little bit more of a visual, letting you see the building elevations and the architectural details included to break up the building masses. A at the top here is a west elevation, so an interior view of the environmental center. So note that the viewpoint from Paradise Valley Drive would be different. It'd be kind of tucked behind this tree here. You'd be looking at the roof lines sloping up towards the hillside. B is a picture of what the cottages would look like. The colors and materials are very similar to what's existing on the Paradise Valley Estates campus, and you'll notice that they're similar to what you would see as a single-family home just within a residential area. C is apartment villa A. Again, you can notice that there's lots of different depths to the elevations. They're not one singular plane. You have different roofline heights, windows, balconies, different inset, pop-outs, kind of give more movement to that building, so it's not as massive as it may appear. D here is the other apartment building. It's villa B. Similar design have been incorporated, pop-outs, balconies, different roofline heights. You can even see that the garage is partially below grade here as the grade slopes upwards towards the hillside. E through G are just different viewpoints of some of the recreational buildings from the plaza. You can kind of see that on the site plan here. So going forward, like I said, there are 20 single-family cottage units proposed. They are all single-story, and they are attached as either duplexes or triplexes. As I previously stated, the colors are similar to the existing campus. The campus recently redid their memory care and added an expansion. They use these, the exact same color scheme, so it'll be very complementary to the campus. The right and south elevation is what will be facing Paradise Valley Drive, and again, they're very complementary and similar to the surrounding neighborhood. This is a single-family cottage in the triplex version. I should note that there are two different floor plans. There are two-bedroom, two-bathroom, two-car garage plan with approximately 1,470 square feet, and there is a floor plan that is two bedrooms, two bathrooms, and a one-car garage for approximately 1,380 square feet. Here is the villa apartment building A. So just kind of another look at all of the different architectural elements that were included to break up the massing and bulk of the buildings. The buildings do not project above any ridge lines. The roof slopes and roof lines will go with the natural terrain. They slope up and away from the downhill street frontage. The south elevation is the main one to look at. That's what will be facing Paradise Valley Drive. There's different articulations and movements in the facade, just continuing to add to the breakup of a mass building. And again, you can see the partially below-grade garage right there. This image shows you the request for additional height that they're asking for with the use permit. Everything in gray is within the 35 feet. Everything in white is what exceeds the 35-foot height limit. So you can see that actually, the only point that hits the 50-foot max is the elevator shaft right here, and it's actually creatively designed to look like a chimney, so you're not thinking there's a big elevator shaft coming out of this building. Villa apartment building B. Once again, similar architectural details, inlets, pop-outs, varying roofline heights, sloping with the terrain and the grade that's existing, similar color scheme to the other buildings in the existing campus. Once again, that south elevation is the one to focus on. That would be the elevation facing Paradise Valley Drive. I should not use the mouse, sorry. Again, we have a similar image that shows you the portion of the building that would actually exceed 35 feet. Again, the maximum point of 50 feet is the elevator shaft, and you will notice that this particular building actually has a little bit less projecting over that 50%, just based on the architecture and the layout of the building. Here is the environmental center. It's one of the first recreational buildings we will go over. The environmental center is located on the southeast corner of the property, so this will be up against Paradise Valley Drive and some of the adjacent residential neighbors. Again, we're just going to keep focusing on south elevations. Here you'll see again that the roof slope comes up and away from the street frontage to reduce the visual impact of the building, although all of the recreational buildings are under the 35-foot height limitation. I should just let you know, the environmental building will be used for electronic golf carts, charging and parking, gardening supplies. There will be a community garden just outside of this building. There'll also be a maintenance/workshop space and some employee office room. Here is the amenities building. Similar to all the other buildings, they keep a kind of a uniform architectural and color pattern throughout the project to keep some consistency. Again, the south elevation is what would be facing Paradise Valley Drive. This building is also under the 35-foot height limit. It'll be home to a café, game room, reading room, art studio, campus store, and some more office space. The clubhouse here, again, is a two-story amenity building with flexible event space and campus maintenance and a staff lounge. The south elevation here does have kind of a large, basic plane. Staff has conditioned for that elevation to be enhanced to break up the visual mass of the plane. Classrooms. This is the last of the recreational buildings. This will be home to exactly what it sounds like, classrooms and flexible event space. Once again, that south elevation has been conditioned to be enhanced, just to add a little more articulation and movement to the facade. As we move on to access, traffic, and circulation, I have another site plan for you. Just to refresh your memory, this is Paradise Valley Drive. Your amenity buildings are right here, single-family cottages, apartment villas, single-family cottages, and the last of the amenity buildings. So, there is one gated entrance that will only be accessible to the residents through a fob key. All vendors, employees, and visitors will still have to use the main entrance that is existing east, or excuse me, I keep getting my east wrong, west, where the existing Paradise Valley campus is. A traffic study was conducted. Four intersections were studied at four different volumes of traffic. All of those intersections were concluded to not have any significant impacts. All of the levels of service stayed exactly the same as currently existing, concluding that this project has no significant impact on the traffic and level of service in the surrounding area. Connection to the existing campus will be right here through this main plaza and street. It'll go straight to the existing campus so that their residents have access. Four intersections were studied at four different volumes of traffic. All of those intersections were concluded to not have any significant impacts. All of the levels of service stayed exactly the same as currently existing, concluding that this project has no significant impact on the traffic and level of service in the surrounding area. Connection to the existing campus will be right here through this main plaza and street. And it'll go straight to the existing campus so that their residents have access. An emergency vehicle access has been provided off of Paradise Valley Drive and off of Couples Court. I'll get a better image of that in the next slide here. So this is the end of the cul-de-sac of Couples Court. Emergency vehicle access can be taken from that cul-de-sac across and over and behind the project's site. There is an existing V ditch that will need to be improved. It has been conditioned by staff per the Public Works and Fire Department to ensure that that V ditch is still functional while being able to support and provide space for an emergency vehicle to cross. Landscaping and open space. A significant amount of plant material has been planned for the site with a variety of trees, shrubs, and ground cover. The minimum proposed tree size that has, that was included with the landscape plan is a 36-inch box, which is actually a few sizes smaller than the city's minimum of 15 gallons. So the larger trees and more mature trees on the site will greatly enhance the landscaping and give a denser, fuller look to the project. Street trees are proposed along all of the interior roadways here and also on the north and south side of Paradise Valley Drive. These will be consistent with the landscaping that's currently out there, and it has been conditioned by the Public Works Department to work with them for that installation. Stormwater treatment areas have been creatively incorporated into the project. Rather than providing one large, unattractive, and unusable basin for the project, several treatment areas have been provided throughout. One of the main ones is in the center right here. It's kind of disguised as a creek, and it's bounded by improvements that make it a usable space for the residents. There is ample landscaping, meandering pathways, park benches, a small bridge, a fire pit, and the classroom building even has an outdoor yoga deck right next to it for the residents to enjoy and use as an open space amenity. Speaking of open space, the zoning ordinance does require 45% of the net parcel to be dedicated to open space. The project currently proposes 40% of open space. However, the ordinance does have language that allows for the reviewing authority to reduce that requirement to something less if they find that the project is of high quality in design. Staff recommends that you do reduce that percentage down to 40%, as there are several open space amenities and areas throughout the project, including the bio-retention area we just discussed in the center, the community garden by the environmental building, outdoor seating by the amenities building here, a multi-use plaza in between the recreational buildings, picnic area over by the oak tree that will be preserved. And in addition, there are four recreational buildings when only two are required. So when you add the recreational buildings to the amenity space, you have a total of 178,285 square feet. So with all those open space areas being said, and including the large tree sizes, the ample landscaping throughout the project, the landscaping on Paradise Valley Drive, and the creative stormwater quality areas, we feel that this project is of high quality in design, and it does meet the intent of the open space requirement in functionality and aesthetics. Just wanted to go over the site plan one more time. I know it's a lot of slides and a lot of information, so just covering it again. A lot line adjustment is required to ensure that the buildings here meet the required building setback requirements. Plotting has been taken into consideration for the adjacent residences having single-family homes on the east property line here. There's ample parking throughout the site. Emergency vehicle access is provided in two locations. A gated entrance is provided for the residents. Open space and landscaping is throughout the property, and stormwater treatment areas are there. Some of the key issues that we've discussed were the lot line adjustment requirement, the reciprocal easement agreement requirement, and the V ditch improvement per the Public Works and Fire Department to allow for that emergency vehicle access off of Couples Court. A draft mitigated negative declaration was prepared to satisfy the California Environmental Quality Act. Potential significant impacts identified during the initial study where air quality, cultural resources, hydrology and water quality, and noise, all of these impacts can be reduced to less than significant levels through the mitigation measures identified in the initial study. And with that, staff recommends the Planning Commission adopt Resolution 2017-19, adopting the mitigated negative declaration and approving the development review and use permit. I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Do any commissioners have any questions for staff?
I have one question. Along the cottages, is there a trail? As you go, yeah. Right along this, is that a public?
Pathway? Are you talking about this path right here?
Trail that goes around? That's between the cottages and, yeah, right where you have it?
This one? That is actually the emergency vehicle access, so it would not be a public trail. It's just in the event of the emergency that any vehicles needed to access the back half of the property.
Okay, okay. All right.
Commissioner Cohen?
Thank you. On the, the emergency vehicle, is that planned to be the main access point for emergency vehicles, or is that a secondary?
I don't, I'm sorry, I can't really speak to if it's a primary or secondary, but there are two access points. There is one off of Paradise Valley Drive here. I believe this access point here is really just to reach the back portion of the property if necessary.
I guess what I'm asking is every time there's a 911 call, is an ambulance or a fire truck going to be going through this residential neighborhood over there to get to the, to the back of the property? That's, that's, I'm out.
No, no, they would, they would be, they would be using one of the accesses directly off of Paradise Valley Drive because it accesses the front yards and the front doors of each of those units.
So it's just a secondary alternative?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
To get to the back.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Is there somebody representing the applicant who would like to address the commission? Nope, nope. Or do any commissioners have any questions of the applicant?
No.
All right. Well, now I'll open the public hearing. I don't have any speaker cards. Would anybody like to speak on this item? Nope. I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Any comments or do I have a motion?
I'd like to, I'd like to make a couple of comments on, on the project. First of all, I'd like to commend the presenter doing a great job. And of course, these are well-laid out plans. I went over them several times. One thing that came to my attention was the fact that this will definitely improve that area. Whoever is familiar with that area, there's that open space in there. So this will kind of blend in with the existing community, and I think that's great. The other comment that I have is that there's a potential of creating jobs, and that's one of the things that I think the city of Fairfield needs is jobs. Maybe not a lot, but with the, I understand that there's supposedly restaurants going in and a couple of other things, so that's a potential of additional jobs. I personally know some of the younger people that actually started out at Paradise Valley Estates, and they're really, I think it's a great asset to the city. The other thing that I really like about it is the fact that they have a separate interest, but it's only for residents, and that makes a big difference. You don't have to have anybody at that particular interest at all times, so I just think it's really a great project.
Any other comments?
I have a motion that we accept as stated by staff, 2017.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second, all in favor? Looks like you have a comment.
We can take it, but I, I just was going to comment both staff and the developer for, the, the thing that stuck out to me was in putting these single-family or single-story cottages right adjacent to the existing houses, I think was a very nice touch to blend it and to not take away as much of the view of those houses as possible, and I'm encouraged by that, and I wanted to compliment you guys on that. I think it's a great project and in all, all counts, and I think it's great for the, for Fairfield, so, thank you.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor? Yes? Opposed? No? I'm, I'm not opposed.
I gotcha.
That was a yes vote. Four, nothing. All right, thank you. All right, Director's Report. Dave, do you have any items for Director's Report?
Yeah, I, I don't have anything specific to report to you tonight. I do want to mention, though, that we don't have anything scheduled for the October 11th meeting, so we're recommending that you can, that you close your meeting tonight to the second, to the, to the fourth Wednesday of October.
The 25th?
The 25th, yes.
All right. All right, do any commissioners have any information items?
Well, I go with that recommendation, so let's take some time off.
All right. No information items? All right, so we're adjourned to October 25th, 2017. Thanks.